Hello and welcome back to another edition of Gmat TV's In-Depth Series. I'm Andrew McKeever, the News Director of Gmat TV's News Project. It's a pleasure to have you with us today on Monday, February 19th. This is actually a very special edition of our In-Depth Series. Today, we have two candidates who are running for the two-year seat on the Arlington Select Board with us to talk about the issues they see as important in the race. Really pleased that was today Cynthia Browning, who is the incumbent Select Board Member, and also Joe Jarvis, who is challenging her for that seat. Cynthia has served on the Arlington Select Board for about 20 years. She's also served as a state representative in Arlington and has been on the Planning Commission, the Zoning Board of Adjustment, and also served on the Baton Hill Watershed Alliance. Joe has served, well, he's had a career in information technology for over 30 years, and in 2013 relocated back to, well, came back to Vermont, or his wife suggested that they get back to Vermont, I guess, in 2013, and came back here from California. And he has done a number of things. He's volunteered with Habitat for Humanity. He is currently running a small business involving custom milling lumber for customers here in Bennigan County, and has also served in the Army Reserves. Joe, thank you very much for being with us.
Thanks.
Thank you both for making the time for this conversation. I think it's great to have our viewers get an opportunity to hear from both of you what your views are on some of the important issues facing the Arlington community. Cynthia, let me start with you as the incumbent. I guess, as I've thought about what are some of the big issues that seem to be confronting Arlington and as well as other communities around the state? The housing question always seems to come to the top of the list. And I guess I just wondered what your thoughts are about housing, what should be done or needs to be done in Arlington? And specifically, I wondered if you might want to talk a bit about the infill housing proposal. There was a state commission that came down to Arlington back in October to look at areas, spots in town where there was an open lot at the moment that might be a site for some housing, presumably workforce or affordable housing. And I guess I just wondered if you could get us started by telling us what your views are about that, if that makes sense, or what else should be done?
Well, the whole infill housing idea is that you have a village and a town area that's already got certain patterns of settlement, and that you can work to make that settlement more dense on the existing infrastructure. So you're not building new roads and things like that. You're working with the existing infrastructure. And Arlington, quite a while ago, loosened the zoning rules about, you know, mother-in-law apartments or garage apartments, those kinds of things, and we allowed buildings to get taller. So we did that a number of years ago, and then we recently revised the zoning in a ways that I think, again, makes it a little easier for people to put on that extra wing or add an apartment, because we want that kind of dense environment, dense development in the village and the town. The issue that you have is wastewater treatment, because Arlington only has septic systems. So you're not going to get a lot of density when you have to have septic systems, because the state requires a lot with a new septic system or how you use an existing septic system. So one of the things the town has actually been looking at is, are there ways to expand and use the septic system that is already in existence at the schools and make that more of a community septic system? Or are there any other parts of town where a community-based septic system might work? For instance, there are some soils along East Arlington Road in East Arlington where they don't perk well, and there have been some failing systems at times, and there's some issues there. So is there a way to have a sort of a small, local, community-based septic system there? Totally in the exploratory process, nothing done. But something like that may have to happen in order to have a lot, enough infill housing to really make a difference. It's certainly good to have a garage apartment, or a mother-in-law apartment, or an extra apartment. That's all to the good, although some of them end up being on Airbnb, which is not affordable housing, and that's a whole other area. But in Arlington, unlike other towns, because of the lack of a wastewater system, we really need to look at that issue first. Then we also have the water system, and we would like to be able to expand that if we had more development. And we're in the process of doing an analysis of that system about how we might expand it, and we're going to be making investments in both studies and infrastructure in the water system. So I think it's important to remember that it isn't always zoning that is a constraint. It can be infrastructure like wastewater or water, and the town does not control what private property owners do, nor should we. But we're doing our best to try to figure out how to invest in the infrastructure that private property owners need in order to create housing.
Okay. Joe, what do you think about the idea of infill housing or other solutions for making housing in Arlington more affordable, let's say, for younger folks that might want to move here and work here?
You know, Arlington is constrained by what the state legislator's doing. You know, they're driving zoning laws so that the infill housing is the desired outcome. They're looking at changes to Act 250 that potentially could have the vast majority of the state requiring Act 250 permits. That's not going to help make housing cheaper. You know, Cynthia talked about accessory dwelling units. I've actually been in the process of building one over the last two years. And the septic problem that she talked about, my solution to it was to buy an adjacent lot to the lot we were on that already had a designed septic system, designed 15 years earlier before today's current standards came in place, because today we see most systems having to be very expensive mound systems, you know, rather than the traditional absorption fields. So it was cheaper for me to go ahead and buy another lot with the design already there, put in a whole separate system, because the system I had in my house, there was no documentation on it. The family's been in the house for 60 years. There was no way for the engineer to easily say, "You can add another bedroom," and it was easier just drop in another system. So that is, you know, the issue here is the wastewater treatment. You know, I think if the state wasn't so focused on driving the density right into the city cores and town village cores, which typically have the rivers running through them, which provide more problems with wastewater treatment, you know, and allowed rural communities to maintain rural development at a controlled pace, you know, I think there might be more options for some people.
Well, where does the wastewater or water infrastructure stand at this point in Arlington? I mean, that's been a big topic of discussion, I'm pretty sure, at your Select Board meetings. Is there, there's a proposal to build up the infrastructure through the downtown, right?
Well, the water system already covers all of downtown and goes into East Arlington, so the water system is already there. It needs repairs, it needs extensions. We hope to be able to extend it so that, you know, if we have more development, we can actually extend the water lines. But the water system is already there. It needs investment, it needs repairs, but it's already there. And we have tremendous water. We have a lot of water. We have really good wells, really good springs in Arlington. We're very fortunate. The wastewater is a whole other issue, and I don't want to get ahead of the studies. We've had a wastewater committee made up of several Select Board members and members of the community. We have engineers studying the possibilities, like, as I say, expanding and using the school system differently so that it could cover some of the neighborhood there, or is there an area in East Arlington that could cover that area? The engineers are seeing what might be possible, but we are a long way from knowing what's really possible. And then, how do you actually get the land if you don't already own it and then build a system? The state wants this to happen, because it's better for clean water, it's better for property owners whose septic systems might be going to fail, because once your septic system fails, you got a really big problem.
You've got problems.
Yes. So this is a new thing for Arlington, and Arlington tries to do things slowly and carefully. So we have this study committee, and we're getting engineering reports, and when we get those reports, we'll be discussing them at the meeting. So I think it's a topic for future discussion. But I think, I think that you can already build in the outlying areas, but, and, but I think Joe is right, that there's a lot of constriction, because you have where the rivers are, and you don't want to build where it's flooding, and you can't build too high up, you know, so there's, there are a lot of constraints. But I still personally, there I did it. I personally see houses in town that are neglected and in disrepair, and I'm aware of several different lots where there used to be mobile homes that are gone. And I'm curious, I don't understand why we can't get those housing items back into use. If I had a significant amount of money, I would be trying to do that, because it's very, very frustrating. That's not for the Select Board to do. The Select Board needs to create the conditions for the community to have its economic activity and its development. And I think we're doing the best we can to do that.
You know, to your point there.
Excuse me, excuse me. But, but I, but I think it's, I still see opportunities for redevelopment and renovation, and I could wish if there are landowners or homeowners who are no longer interested in that house, if they could figure out a way to move it on to someone who is.
Joe, your turn.
Yeah, I mean, to Cynthia's point there on the redevelopment, you know, again, it comes back to what are the burdens to redevelop? Because you've got to bring it up to current code, you've got huge energy code requirements now, and other conditions there, that, you know, you're ending up taking a lot, you know, develop a lot and having a cheaper economic solution than redeveloping because of all the investment that needs to go, you know, after you tear everything down. So it's a big challenge, and we need to look, you know, and I think that, again, goes back to the state and what's coming down from state requirements, not something that we can change in our zoning requirements to make it easier to rehabilitate some of these homes.
I think, I think that's true. It is the state. I also do want to point out that Arlington actually has several Shire's Housing projects in Arlington, different apartment projects, and so that is permanently affordable housing or potentially affordable. People pay rent based on their income, is my understanding. So, again, this is another way in which we're a small town, but we actually have those, those projects. One of them is on 313, and one of them is up off of East Arlington Road in 7A, and it was generous landowners who cooperated with Shire's Housing to get those projects done, and I'd like to see more of them.
Joe, let me, let me turn to you and ask you this question kind of related to that before we move on from the housing question. What about short-term rentals? What are your feelings about those? Should there be like a registry? Sometimes I've been following, I've talked about having a registry of short-term rentals. In other words, somebody wants to, you know, rent part of their home for a weekend to someone traveling through, you have to be in a registry. Is that a good idea, do you think? Or do you think the whole, there's a, there's a much bigger issue with short-term rentals as part of the sort of deficit in housing that it causes?
You know, there's, there's a lot of issues. Corporate ownership of housing is something that really isn't discussed much, but, you know, takes inventory that otherwise could be bought by younger citizens and just takes it out and turns it into rentals or vacant homes. You know, the short-term rental question, you know, you see sometimes that have a lot of issue with it, because you've got remote landowners, you know, they don't live at that short-term rental, and it ends up being a party rental, and it's not what the neighborhood wants, particularly as you get up towards the ski resorts. Arlington, you know, I think we've got different demographics, and I don't think we need that control of the citizens to say, "You've got to have your short-term rental in a registry."
Cynthia, what are your thoughts on that?
I think that, I think it is an issue in Arlington, although much, much less of a one than other areas, but I can think of like about four houses, just off the top of my head, that used to be lived in full-time and are now short-term rentals. And I think it's really important for private property owners to be able to develop and use their property as they see fit. I guess the, a couple of things that do occur to me, though, about the registry is health and safety, because I have heard of Airbnb unit, I shouldn't say Airbnb, short-term rental units where there were no smoke detectors, or no fire extinguishers, or issues with the furnace, or other kinds of issues. And I think it is really important that if people are going to be staying in a house, that it be safe. Now, it's in the interest of the owner that that be true, and also any internet, you know, based rental agency. And I don't, we have not discussed a registry in Arlington. I think that we have been more focused on the basics of trying to run the town in a good way. I think we like to be a little bit hands-off of, you know, that kind of thing. But at some point, that may be an issue that we need to talk about, because if every house that's built becomes a short-term rental, that, and I think particularly the corporate ownership, because once somebody has, you know, 12 houses and is renting them all short-term rental, that's not just somebody renting their spare bedroom in order to cover their property taxes, it's something else. I don't know the answer to that, but I think that it's an important issue for the community to have a future discussion about, and I think that would be a good topic. But I'm not going to get ahead of that.
All right. Well, let's, let's move on and pivot to another question that actually will be, is on the town warning for upcoming town meeting. And that's the question of whether or not the town treasurer should be appointed rather than elected. I guess voters will get a chance to weigh in on this question. Should the town treasurer be, you know, kind of recruited from wherever as opposed to being elected by, by folks? Joe, what do you think about that? Should, should the treasurer be appointed rather than elected?
You know, I've had some of our constituents ask, you know, "What's my opinion on it?" And it's, "What problem are we trying to solve? You know, are we concerned about the job that the treasurer's doing? You know, we've got a system of audits to help us see, you know, are things being run properly? Do the financial reports reflect what's going on? You know, so what question are we trying to solve with this ballot initiative? You know, there was significant angst in the community over the tax rate this year, an issue that was missed last year and, you know, resulted in a significant increase in the town tax rate, municipal tax rate. Treasurer played a part in that, but the treasurer doesn't set that tax rate. It's the, you know, the treasurer provides input with what's the approved budget and what's needs to be raised. The listers provide input through what the grand list is, but ultimately, the Select Board approves that tax rate. So are we throwing the treasurer under the bus because of a tax rate issue? I don't know. I think when you look at any elected position and look at converting that from a public servant to an employee, you change the character of what that position is. With a public servant, you're there serving the community, you've gone through the efforts of campaigning for that position, being elected into that position, and it's not just a job. Where you hire a treasurer, it's much more likely that it's going to be a job. It's definitely more the case that you're going to have to offer competitive salary for the position, because now you're, you're not competing, you know, as an elected position, you're competing with accounting firms and other places for that treasurer to work. So I think it leads us to a place where it could be much more expensive for Arlington in the long run, having an appointed treasurer versus an elected treasurer.
Cynthia, what are your thoughts on that?
Well, I think it's important to remember that this is not the first time we've considered this question. Back in 2021, the Select Board made the same proposal because of our concern that the level of complexity with municipal accounts was such that an elected person was not necessarily going to have the expertise that was needed. And this was what we were advised by our outside auditor, that this was the direction we needed to go. At that time, and it was 2021, the motion, the article to replace an elected treasurer with an appointed treasurer lost by six votes. And the current treasurer has certainly worked very hard and done her best to take care of things, but we have had to use an internal auditor a lot, we have had outside auditors, and the errors that led to the shortfall and the need to raise the municipal property taxes, as far as I can tell, did originate with the treasurer, and the Select Board has taken responsibility for our failure to catch it. When we identified the shortfall, we made the difficult decision that we had to raise the municipal property taxes. We have made up for the shortfall. We ended this year with a surplus, partly because of a mild winter last year and greater collection of delinquent taxes. So right now, we expect that for the current, the coming budget year, we will be able to cover our expenses, put money aside in savings, keep more cash on hand for emergencies, which the auditors have been recommending, and still reduce property tax bills by 16%. Now, remember, this is just municipal property tax bills. There's the whole school issue that the town does not control, and we don't know what's going on with that. But, and we're, and I'm talking about the total bill. So the bill is the result of the rate times your assessed value. So we are expecting that the bill will go down by perhaps 16%, but we can't set it until we have all the figures in the summer. So the community will decide whether they want to have an appointed or elected treasurer, and I certainly understand the desire to have someone who's elected, who's accountable to the community. But the problem is that, as it stands, the Select Board doesn't have the ability to enforce any kind of regular office hours from the treasurer, or that the treasurer come to a Select Board meeting, or that the treasurer produce reports of a certain kind at a certain date. We've been trying to do that more, because that was obviously one of the things we should have been doing more. But the reason why the Select Board has proposed this article, or at least the reason why I think we have, I shouldn't speak for the whole board, just speaking for myself, is that the difficulties in the treasurer's office have made it harder for the Select Board to serve the town. It's definitely the listers, the treasurer, the internal auditor, the town administrator, and the Select Board were all working together. And if any part is not really up to the task, it makes it harder for the Select Board to make good decisions to serve the community, to allocate money and, and properly propose a budget. And I just want to point out that recently, the treasurer did put something in the newspaper about the issues here, and she actually made an error in that piece. She said that the budget increased by $400,000 in one year. It did not. It increased by $400,000 across two years. I have the figures right here. So, and we never would have voted those increases if we had had a correct understanding of the financial situation. And let me tell you, we are having every figure that comes before us completely vetted now, going forward. We have learned our lesson. But it's really telling to me that she has made a mistake in the public statement that she made, that she had plenty of time to do. She has completely mischaracterized what happened. So if she's going to make a mistake in that context, what other kinds of mistakes are we going to have if she is reelected? So I want to have a treasurer that will produce the best possible books and accounting in service to the town of Arlington, so that the Select Board can make the best possible decisions. So we'll let the community decide that. If I'm still on the board, I'll work with whoever's there. But I just really feel that the system did not serve the community as well as it should have, and I think this would be a way to make it less likely that someone plugging numbers into a formula would plug in the wrong numbers.
Before we move on to the next question, anything further you wanted to add to this area?
You know, I mean, part of what Cynthia's talking about here is the natural tension that happens when you have different elected officials that don't report to each other, different people responsible for different aspects of the town administration. You know, that's a situation where you don't have hierarchical leadership. The town clerk doesn't report to the Select Board, the treasurer doesn't report to the Select Board, they're separately elected officials. That's where influence leadership becomes very, very important. Because you don't have that direct relationship, it's very important to be able to lead through influence, through building relationships. You know, that's something that I bring to the town of Arlington. I had served a number of years as an overseas missionary, had people working for me as volunteers that lived 10,000 miles away. You don't walk down the hall and, you know, make something happen. It's all through building relationship and having influence because of trust you build between individuals, you know, and I think that's one of the challenges we've got right now in Town Hall, is some strange relationships that, you know, need some investment.
Okay. Well, let's, let's move on to something that's probably been discussed a great deal over the past couple of years, and that's ARPA funding. I know that Select Board has made a number of decisions on how to divide up the, I think, approximately $600,000 in ARPA funding that the town received, but there's still about $70,000 left. It hasn't been decided where it's going to go. So I guess, something I wonder if you could get us started on this one, beyond some of the projects that have already been, been discussed. I guess the fire department is in line to get some, $100,000, I think, for a new excavator, and also some, some water, water system money will, the water system will get some money. What, I guess maybe the first part of that is, do you think that so far, so good? And part B, the what's left, what might be a priority?
I'm not sure that your figures are quite right. I can't do it off the top of my head, but I think there might be more than that not yet allocated. I think that the ARPA funding, one of the things to see about the ARPA funding is that we don't want to use the ARPA funding for something that we can fund in another way. So if there's something that has lots of grant programs or state funding, we don't want to use the ARPA for that, because we've got another source. Or is there a way that we can partner them, you know, use it for the match? We also want to be aware that there's going to be more federal funding from the infrastructure bill coming down. So we also want to be sure we match this then. So there may be some projects that would be better funded by the later infrastructure money. So we're really trying to get the most out of these funds for the property taxpayers to try to do things that would be hard for us to do with property taxes, or that would be really expensive. So some of the ARPA money went to fund that wastewater study, so that it's not being funded by property tax dollars, it's the ARPA funding. So that's an extra to do the wastewater study to find out about solving this constraint. So we're using the ARPA for that. We used it for an extrication tool for the fire department, helping people get out of vehicles when there's been an accident. So that's perfect, because it was expensive, it's something that serves the community. So we're trying to identify things like that. There are things for the water department as well. It's important to remember that the water department is not funded by property taxes at all, it's funded by the water ratepayers. So, you know, so we're really trying to balance what we give the money to and make sure that all these different things get some of this extra funding, because we don't get extra money like this from the feds very often, it usually has more strings. And I'll just point out that Arlington got the recreation part land from a federal block grant in the 1972 or something like that. So you don't get chunks of federal money that often like this.
Once every 15 years.
And we're really trying to, trying to make the most of it.
All right. Joe, what are your thoughts on the ARPA monies?
You know, like Cynthia said, we've got to be good stewards of that money to balance, you know, the long-term impact. We want to make sure the choices that are made there don't set up a hunger for continued spending, you know, that it really is one-time things, that it's a great application of the money. You know, if we have an accident, that extraction equipment is great, you know. So we want to keep with stuff like that and make sure that, you know, we just don't expect that type of money, because like Cynthia said, it's not something that happens every day.
Yeah, you definitely don't want to build it into your budget.
Yeah. And, you know, yes, it's free money. We pay every time we go to the grocery store and the gas station.
We pay in federal taxes. Somebody's going to have to pay back.
Oh, the biggest thing is inflation. That's the biggest tax. Yeah.
But we're also going to pay, sooner or later, the bonds that are financing this will have to be repaid. So there's no such thing as free money. I also want to point out that, notwithstanding what happened last summer with the errors in the previous year's setting of the tax rates, when we had the outside audit, we had a complete outside audit of all the town finances done, we got the final report a little while ago, and a little while ago, and overall, Arlington's financial situation is very good and very solid. They had a number of recommendations, we're trying to implement those recommendations in terms of getting regular reports, keeping more cash on hand, really common sense kinds of stuff. But, and they also want the water department to do more investment in the infrastructure, which is also correct, and we will pursue that. But at least, I hope we will pursue that. But one of the really important things about Arlington is the system of sinking funds. The townspeople of Arlington, for decades, have put money aside to save up for things. We save up for fire trucks, we save up for graders, we save up for highway trucks, we save up for a lot of different things. Over and over again, we ask in the budget to allocate money to these different uses, and the townspeople support it. And that means that when one of these big-ticket items comes due, when we have to buy another fire truck or another highway truck, we have money to go for it, not always enough because of inflation. But this is an incredible thing, and the auditor really said that it's very, very distinctive. Not all the towns around here do that. And that means that either you have to issue a bond to buy something, or you have to lease it, which is not going to be as efficient in the long run. So I think one of the strengths of Arlington's fiscal situation is the system of saving for future needs, and the community has been stalwart in supporting that. And also, because of a vote by the community a number of years ago, when we have to borrow in anticipation of property taxes, we don't have to go to the bank and borrow necessarily, although we sometimes do. We can borrow from ourselves. We have borrowed from our own sinking funds, and then we pay interest to ourselves. So we have the option of borrowing from the bank, we still do that sometimes, but we have the option of borrowing from ourselves. And that's just an amazingly strong thing. And I think that the people of Arlington should be really, really proud of what they have accomplished in creating that system, and continue to support that system.
You know, it really is the Dave Ramsey envelope system on steroids, where you're just putting the money aside in that envelope for that fire truck that you know you're going to have to buy in 10 years, or that excavator.
Yeah. Yeah. And we have a whole capital reserve funding timeline of how much we need to save for seven years or 10 years to buy the next thing, and it's available. I don't think it's usually in here, because it's huge, but we really have it planned out, and we could be more systematic still about that. But I think people deserve a lot of credit for that.
Let me turn to the energy slash climate area here. Your town's energy committee has done some interesting work on tracking the town's energy use of various buildings the municipality owns. I guess I just wondered, looking forward, do you think that this is an area that should be a priority for the town to kind of study the data around how much a town garage uses, or some other building, and find ways to either conserve energy, or to maybe change energy sources? Is that something, Joe, let me start with you on this one, that you think ought to be a priority going forward? Or is it something that the committee's, you know, work has been interesting so far? You have this data spreadsheet that they put together, and it's just a matter of letting that work go forward?
You know, again, a lot of this is being driven outside of the town with state mandates on transition of heating systems and transportation systems. It's good to have the energy committee there supporting it. You know, I think some of these mandates restrict good solutions. You know, the transportation sector, there's a lot of push towards electrification. Okay, I see a lot of research on hydrogen vehicles. You've got hydrogen vehicles starting to show up on the racetrack. But, you know, you've got this push for electrification. Electricity doesn't work real well, you know, renewable energy in the winter. You know, get that snowstorm, and the solar panels are buried for the next three days. And that's when you've got peak load for a lot of these systems with the heating systems. I've gone electric-based radiant in projects that I've done for myself, and, you know, that's my highest consumption throughout the year, is those winter months, you know, particularly those cold months. Heat pumps have been something that have been pushed, and the technology isn't quite there for our climate. You know, it gets to a certain point where we get below a certain temperature, and then the systems revert into an electric resistance heater, which was the stuff that was banned from the energy standards, because it was requiring too much electricity. So conservation is great. I mean, to be able to use 300 gallons of fuel oil instead of 600 gallons of fuel oil, that helps the taxpayers of Arlington. A wholesale switch to electrification, that's being pushed from the federal government on down. I think it's better to adopt the technology as it's ready, rather than have mandates to say that everything's going to be done by 2030 or 2050. You know, and I think we've got to allow competition to still happen there, because there's other solutions that are going to be more effective.
So I think the energy committee has done a good job of trying to come up with this sort of overall accounting for the town in terms of how much emissions are we generating, and those kinds of measurements. And I think it's really important to know where you are. I think it's going to be very difficult to replace diesel as a fuel for plow trucks and things like that. It's just going to be really hard. So I think there are going to be certain areas where I think fossil fuels still have a place, and I don't see why we can't reduce emissions without being draconian about, you can never do X. Because I think they all have their role in sort of the portfolio of energy sources. I did see something about distilling wood scraps into fuel for trucks, but we certainly have a lot of wood. But anyway, that's a digression. I think that the town needs to continue to work to conserve and create more efficiencies. All of the buildings are already, we've already worked on the windows and things like that. We need to do more work there. We need to have more efficient, you know, boilers and furnaces. And I would like to see more solar panels, despite the issue because of snow, because there's sometimes you can orient them so that the snow slides off. I wonder about some of the parking lots, you know, up at the schools or something? Is there a way to use those? I believe there are solar panels on one of the schools, that a company put them in, as the town did not, the school did not do it directly. And I don't know if there's some ways to do more of that. I would like to see that. But conservation and efficiency, to my mind, are the solution. Electricity, electrical vehicles, where they have their place, but not being in a big rush to convert before the technology is ready. I think out in Chicago, when it got really cold, a whole bunch of electric vehicle owners found out that your vehicle doesn't charge well in the minus department, and we are below zero, notwithstanding this winter, we are below zero fair amount. We cannot afford to have plow vehicles that won't start.
Well, just real quick, before we sort of close this down, last July, we saw many communities were hammered pretty badly by flooding. And then we saw kind of another go-round of that back in December, and not quite as bad as the July flooding. And fortunately, around here, we didn't go through the same experience that towns like Londonderry or Weston did. But I guess I just wondered, looking forward, since there's been a lot of talk about, you know, the 100-year floods are now happening every 10 years, or even maybe sooner, is there anything the town should be doing to kind of, you know, prepare for flooding? I realize the Baton Kill flow is a little bit downhill from the main part of town, but is that an issue you think that the town ought to be thinking ahead, and maybe putting in some resilience for?
Well, I think that we have been working on our culverts for decades now. We have been working on right-sizing the culverts. There are a number of culverts in town that several decades ago would clog up with every flood, and sometimes the road would get washed out, because the culverts were too small, so they'd get jammed with debris, and then they wash the road out. And everybody knows exactly what that looks like. So we have systematically been increasing the size of the culverts, particularly along the Baton Kill. As you go into West Arlington, there's a number of them, Upchucks Brook, Brook Road, Along River Road. And now you have streams like Benedict Brook or Chunks Brook, where we have culverts big enough, so that in Tropical Storm Irene, she brought a lot of wood and a lot of rocks through the culvert, but it didn't clog. Neither did Chunks Brook. So I think right-sizing the culverts can really work to protect our road infrastructure. Tropical Storm Irene, the river came up, she came up in my backyard, she filled the Yellow Barn Field, she filled the rec park, and then she went back to her same bed. She didn't flip around and do all kinds of crazy stuff. So that tells you that we may have a system that has a degree of flood resilience. It doesn't mean that certain areas can't get clogged and then flood, because part of the floods along 313 were because both of the bridges near the golf course got clogged. And so that's one of the big problems. But the road didn't wash out, people got wet basements, but if you live near the Baton Kill, your basement is going to get wet. That's part of being there. So I think that we're lucky, as you say, that the center of town is up a little bit. East Arlington's another story, though, because it's got a lot of streams going through it. So I think we should not feel that what happened elsewhere can't happen here. It can, maybe not in the same ways, but to continue to work on right-sizing the culverts, to be aware of the possibility that you might flood, and to be alert to that, and to have a good emergency management system. Because I think the town did have that during Irene, and the select board and the select board chair at that time, and the water department head, and the highway department head, and the state, they all worked together to make things work for the citizens. And God forbid we ever have such a catastrophe again, I hope we'll do the same then. But everybody, the town certainly has that in mind, and we've been trying to deal with our infrastructure as much as we can. But there's going to be a limit to what the town can do, and all citizens need to take care of themselves and their neighbors, as well as contacting the town.
What are your thoughts on that one? You know, I think part of the challenge is the handcuffs that are placed on the town on what can actually be done with the rivers and streams themselves. You go back several decades, you know, and gravel will be taken out of the river, the channel will be maintained a bit better. We saw in July where, just over the border from East Arlington and Sunderland, Roaring Branch went and moved 100 yards. You know, the channel just reestablished itself elsewhere. Just up in Manchester, we see a section of river that constantly breaches the dike and floods out the homeowners there. So, you know, there's constraints that the town can't fix. We can do things like culverts and that, but, you know, the environmental laws have restricted making sure the rivers can flow like they need to flow. We don't want the concrete aqueducts that California has, that's not what I'm saying, but I think there's a balance in between, where, you know, rivers build up gravel over time, the big storms will move a bunch of that. But proactively, we used to take some of that out in the past, and current environmental regulations restrict that. And that's something we can't fix on the town level, it's at state and national level.
But it's my understanding that the idea is, the best way to prevent flood damage is to pull, is to give the river some space, because all rivers are going to flood, and all rivers are going to move. If you try to hem it in, or build dikes or anything, you're just moving the problem downstream, because you create a fire hose.
Right.
So I think that, you know, Arlington, I mean, there's lots of things and lots of places that existed before zoning or before anything, but we have zoning restrictions about how close you can now build to the river, and I think that's a healthy thing, because you don't want to have private buildings or town infrastructure too close to the streams. You know, if you can avoid it. The interesting thing about the way many of the bridges in West Arlington, for instance, are designed, is that they're designed for the river to flood up and go around them. So you're not pretending that you're going to have a bridge big enough for the whole river. It's just designed, the Cover Bridge or Benedict Crossing, they knew that the river was going to flood, but it would just go around the bridge, and maybe take out the entrance road, and then go back. And that's what you want to be thinking about, about having infrastructure that is resilient, that you can easily repair. I don't, first of all, I don't think building dikes along any of the streams is going to solve a problem. But second of all, since we can't, there's no point in complaining about it, because it's a state issue. So Arlington has to do what it can to manage the Baton Kill and all the tributary streams within the constraints that face us, the constraints from Mother Nature, and the constraints from the state and the feds. And I think the best thing is to give the rivers room to move things around as they wish, and to come up and then go back. But that is, if we get the amount of rain that, what did Londonderry get, or Ludlow, they got like seven inches in seven hours or something? I don't know what would happen if we got that. And we may find out, you know.
You know, the conundrum is, this takes us right back to the very first question that opened this interview. The emphasis is on building in these village cores, which were right where all these rivers and streams are.
But that's not the case in Arlington. I mean, it's true in East Arlington, but it's not the case in the central part of Arlington. You certainly have some drainage, you know, culverts and everything through the central part of Arlington, but you don't have the Baton Kill right there. That's the healthy part, that the center of Arlington is up a little bit. That's a really good thing. And I think there is room for infill in some of those areas.
Well, on that note, let me sort of invite you both just to make a closing comment, closing statement. This has been a very fascinating conversation, a lot of issues, but I guess, before we have to run, and Joe, I'll start with you, in a minute or two, what would you like the voters to know that maybe we haven't had a chance to talk about here today so far, or just what we should know, Joe?
You know, just real simple, I mean, I've just got a passion for Arlington, and just want the opportunity to serve the community, and just look forward to your vote on March 5th. Thank you.
All right. Cynthia?
Well, I think that my work in Arlington, whether it was on the Baton Kill, in terms of conservation and restoration of the Baton Kill Trout Fishery, or on the Arlington Select Board, or in the legislature, that's been the most important work of my life. When you're working on the Arlington Select Board, you're working to try to create the conditions of life for your neighbors, for your community, for your family and friends. The best thing about a town is if people don't even notice, because they can drive where they need to go, and they have water to drink, and they have schools for their kids to go to, and it all works smoothly. But it takes a lot of work to make that happen. And a lot of meetings, and a lot of arguing, and a lot of reading, and a lot of researching, but it's all worth it, because it's about creating conditions of life for your community. And I hope that I have been a small part of making Arlington better over the past 20 years, and I ask nothing more than to have a chance to continue to make that contribution. Thank you.
All right. Well, I'll have to leave it there for today, folks. Joe Jervis, Cynthia Browning are running for the two-year seat on the Arlington Select Board, and both of them will be hoping for your vote. And in case you don't know it already, a town meeting is coming up pretty soon, right around the corner. Monday, March 4th, will be an informational meeting that will start at 6:30 PM at the Arlington Memorial High School gym. There will be some voting on some of the articles there off the floor, but mostly it will be discussion about the other articles, and those will be voted on by Australian ballot the following day, Tuesday, March 5th. It's the official town meeting day. The polls will be open from 10 AM to 7 PM, again, at the Arlington Memorial High School gym. We want to thank both Joe Jervis and Cynthia Browning for making the time to speak with us today and have this conversation, to help inform your voting and your feelings about what the town should be doing going forward. And we thank you for being with us today. And please, make sure you get out and go vote during town meeting. Your vote is your voice. Thank you again for being with us, we'll see you again the next time.